Hey, folks, if we can go ahead and get started, please. Thank you, everybody. I know we have a crowd here, and I know we need to get going because we have a lot of conversations. I'm sure a lot of folks who kind of want to weigh in as well. First off, I'm Dan Stork, the chair of the committee, and a couple housekeeping items to get started. First is, we had an October 3, 2023 meeting summary. Were there any changes to that, to that committee notes, the summary notes that we had? Okay. Are there any expected updates from last meeting that the board members have not received or received a follow-up response on? Okay. If there's no further comments, suggestions, let the minutes stand as really a record of our meeting, and we are going to go right into the next item, which is Lake Aketink Report. And I'm going to ask the members to introduce themselves, and then we're going to go to a video. So be a quick introduction, and then we'll go to the video that will then, after that, each of them will be presenting briefly. And I'll start with Chairman.
Sharon Bulova, and I've been chairman of this task force, was requested to do so by Supervisor Walkinshaw, and Supervisor Stork, and Chairman McKay. And so that was my previous job here in this room as, before Jeff. So, thank you for this opportunity.
John Cook, private citizen, member of the task force, chaired the, what was it called, Future of Lake Aketink Subcommittee.
Sandy Collins, Friends of Aketink Creek, and I chaired the Subcommittee Reviewing Staff's Recommendation Not to Dredge.
Good morning. Gail Nittle, president of the Springfield Civic Association and 40-plus-year resident of the area. I was the co-chair with my friend Alan here on the Subcommittee that looked into the value of Lake Aketink, to Lake Aketink Park and to the county.
Alan Robertson, was appointed to the task force by James Walkinshaw, representing the organization Save Lake Aketink. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you.
Martin Shepard, I'm representing Ravensworth Farm Civic Association to the task force. I'm a 60-plus-year resident of Ravensworth Farm and have grown up next to the lake all my life.
Well, thank you all very much for being here, and more importantly, thank you very much for your, I'm sure, hundreds, maybe thousands of hours of work on this project. So with that, we'll go to the video.
Chairman McKay, Supervisor Lusk, and I asked the board to establish the task force because we wanted to bring the community into the process, because Lake Aketink is at risk. And it's at risk due to the significant amount of sediment that we have entering the lake, and the need to dredge the lake, and the really substantial cost to do the project as originally envisioned, which was dredging the entire lake. So we established the task force to make sure that we have looked at every possible solution to have a sustainable lake that the community can continue to enjoy. So in the past, we've looked at either a full dredge or allowing it all to become a managed wetland. The task force is looking at some hybrid approaches, where maybe we dredge a smaller portion of the lake and have the rest of it be a managed wetland or a grassland, and what would that look like? So they're looking towards the future to make sure that we've examined every possible creative solution before a final decision is made.
Supervisor Walkinshaw and Chairman McKay both came to me and asked if I would convene the community, if I would get folks together. And I really believe in giving the community a voice. This is the community's reaction, the community's response to a staff recommendation to not dredge the lake, let it return to its natural state. I've done task forces before over the years. I broke them up into three groups, three subgroups. One to focus on, well, what is the value of Lake Aketink? Two, Lake Aketink Park and to the county, and really to the region. The second subgroup deals with staff's recommendation. What are issues and what are impacts associated with that recommendation? Our shorthand for that subgroup is, you know, a critique of the staff recommendation. Did they get it right? Should they have looked at some other things? And then the third subgroup, which is chaired by John Cook, looks at, well, if not a full traditional dredge, which was approved in 2019, what are some other options? What might we do instead?
Essentially, what we were asked to do is say, are there other options between the current lake and nothing? And what are they? And in fact, there are a lot of options other than the current lake and nothing. And so we developed those, and around a few concepts. One is to preserve a smaller lake. That reduces the dredging costs, and it also reduces the amount of dredge material, because that's a big part of the cost. What do you do with all the stuff you're digging up? And one of the, I think probably, principal findings of our group was that most, if not all, of the dredge spoils can be kept on-site.
As part of the Subcommittee that talks about the value of Lake Aketink, we highlighted the health benefits that are associated with being in close contact to a water body such as Lake Aketink. There are recent studies, or even studies dating back decades in both the United States and internationally, that highlights the health benefits, lowering blood pressure, helping to relieve stress, and just bringing in a very more peaceful state of mind for those that are. So what are the health impacts that would be removed, reduced, if we remove the lake?
The task force was formed of several members of the community, people from civic associations, HOAs, but also subject matter experts, a professor from George Mason University, and engineers. We're meeting, talking about the problem of dredging the lake and what to do with it in the future. This is a gathering place for families, celebrations, weddings, birthdays, just weekend picnics. And the park on the weekends, when the weather's nice, is absolutely packed.
My family and I lived not too far from here. We moved to this neighborhood originally because we love being able to walk to Lake Aketink. So I represent the lake and the community, but I'm also personally invested in the future of the lake and the park.
Well, that's a very impressive piece, and I want to particularly thank Channel 16, I know, working with all of you, but it's a great overview, and I think one that will be very helpful for our communities to help understand really the processes that you all have been going through, and ultimately, the decisions that will be made, and why they may be made this way or that way. So with that, Chairman Bulova?
Thank you so much. And it seems strange to be on this side of the table. Here I am. This is what happens when you retire from the Board of Supervisors. Let's see, we're starting out, and I have never done this before, so here we go. All right, so far, so good. This is a difficult slide to read, but if you could read it, you would see that this process has been going on for quite some time. And in fact, there have been processes before this to assess the value and to, you know, to talk about how to dredge Lake Aketink. It shows the conversation about redredging. The process actually began as a remaster planning of Lake Aketink Park, and that was led by John Cook, who was the Braddock Supervisor at the time. But then it morphed into, or focused on, the dredging of Lake Aketink. In October of 2019, the board, and I was chairman at the time, approved a financing plan for dredging, and in June 2020, staff applied for and then received $30.5 million in loan funding from the Virginia Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund. Yay. Arcadis was selected as the contractor, and work began on the dredging program. Arcadis and county staff evaluated numerous potential options, all of which raised challenges. Arcadis also did a deep dive into costs, which had increased due to additional sediment that needed to be removed, and much higher processing, trucking, and disposal costs than originally estimated. More frequent maintenance dredging also was added in. And in fact, it was estimated that dredging would be required every five years, not every 15 years, which was originally believed. As a result, the costs were estimated to be $95 million for the base dredging, and $300 million for the first 20 years after the base dredge, or $395 million over 25 years. County staff recommended that the lake not be dredged due to significant community and environmental impacts and the cost, and instead recommended restarting the park's master planning process, with an emphasis on developing a sustainable vision for the lake and the park. When this information was presented to the community at meetings in February, residents were understandably upset, which is an understatement. They were angry. They were disappointed, and wanted to come to the table to be part of the process. The same information was presented to the board's environmental Subcommittee in April. Supervisor Walkinshaw shared with the board how residents felt, and that the lake is a treasure, is loved by generations of residents, and that many feel that not every possible option had been explored. He then announced that he would ask the board to establish a task force on the future of Lake Aketink, to review the studies that had been done, get more information about the managed wetland option under consideration, and explore the possibility of a hybrid approach that would maintain an open water feature, and supervisor, former Supervisor Cook hates that term, open water feature means lake. Membership. Supervisor Walkinshaw asked me to chair the task force. Former Braddock District Supervisor John Cook and 30 additional members were identified, and that included membership on the task force that was made up of community representatives who are here at the table with me, the NAACP, Earthsanga, EQWAC, Northern Virginia Regional Commission, George Mason University, the Sierra Club, and more. The task force was created to ensure that community members were at the table to ensure that options were explored and the public's questions were answered. County staff were present only to provide information and to answer questions. The findings of the task force come from the community. The mission of the task force was to conduct a review and develop findings on the previous studies performed by Arcadis and WSSI on the dredging plan, to ensure that all possible options have been considered to preserve Lake Aketink in the most sustainable, equitable, and cost-effective manner possible. Identify relevant information, needs, and questions that should be addressed should the board proceed with studying a managed wetland option or a hybrid option for managed wetlands in a smaller lake. Findings should also consider the impacts to the environment, surrounding communities, recreational uses of the park, and financing included in ongoing maintenance. The task force began meeting on June 26. Meetings of the full task force were held here at the Government Center, all but one here in this room. So this is our room. Meetings were held in person and both broadcast and streamed on Channel 16. Time was set aside at the beginning of each meeting for public comment. One of the first things we did was to review the list of questions based on the concerns residents expressed at community meetings in February and the subsequent survey, and to add additional questions for the new consultant, WSP Limnotec, to address as they looked at what a managed wetland could look like as an alternative to dredging Lake Aketink. It became obvious that the task force would benefit from breaking into smaller groups to look at topics in more detail. So I named three subcommittees. These subcommittees conducted research and worked on producing content for the final findings report. A fourth Subcommittee was in charge of compiling, writing, and editing the Subcommittee's reports, and that was chaired by Brian Campbell, who is not at the table but is with us, behind us. And he has represented on the task force Friends of Long Branch Stream Valley. And editors were assigned from each of the subcommittees to work with him on the final findings report. In total, the full task force met nine times, the subcommittees met 21 times, and we held our final meeting on December the 4. And with that, I would like to turn the meeting over to, or the presentation over to Alan Robertson and Gail Nittle. They are the co-chairs of the first committee, which looked at the value of Lake Aketink. Gail and Alan.
The value of Lake Aketink. Thank you. The value of Lake Aketink cannot be determined by just the final cost of dredging. Lake Aketink has value to those with mobility issues who can appreciate the beauty and beneficial effects of the lake from their car, or like Grace, the woman you see in the wheelchair in the picture, sitting there in her wheelchair at the water's edge, just a few feet from her car. Has value to the Special Olympics team members who practice at the lake. Has value to the local underserved Trails for Youth Kids who kayak and learn the importance of the lake to the fish and the birds. Or to those who live in the economically disadvantaged neighborhoods within walking distance of the lake, like the immigrant from the Philippines in tears as she shared her story. Quote, "We relied on our trips to Lake Aketink to keep my siblings and me out of trouble. What I enjoyed most was sitting by the water. I needed the peace, and the lake brought me. I still need it. So many others like my family and me need Lake Aketink." End of her quote. Lake Aketink embodies and is a showcase for the county's One Fairfax policy. There is no price tag on social equity and justice. Alan.
Teddy Roosevelt is a man who understood the value of outdoor recreation. Beginning in the '30s and through the '50s, the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors also understood the value of outdoor recreation and discussed very early purchasing or acquiring Lake Aketink for its beauty and recreational value. And that discussion became more earnest, of course, in the '50s, and the county finally acquired Lake Aketink through a lease in 1960 and then purchased it in 1963. And when Fairfax County acquired Lake Aketink, it took on responsibility, in the words of Sharon Bulova, open quote here, "to protect and nurture," close quote, "this Fairfax County treasure." Lake Aketink's recreational value extends from the water to every park amenity. As discussed in our report and a thorough statistical analysis by Ken Balbuena, a task force member, the Department of Public Works and Environmental Services flawed public survey from earlier this year failed to capture useful and needed data. A new survey is needed. One of the features that brings visitors to the park is the wildlife that Lake Aketink supports. The lake is an invaluable asset to wildlife and the environment. A quality of life and financial issue that touches every Fairfax County resident and taxpayer. In addition to providing wildlife habitat, the lake is the greatest stormwater and sediment control facility between the concrete and asphalt jungle upstream and the Chesapeake Bay downstream. The lower Aketink sediment TMDL relies upon a 47% average trapping capacity of the lake. It will be costly if that trapping capacity is lost. Lake Aketink is more valuable today than ever before. The community, the environment, need the resources Lake Aketink provides. And what a travesty it would be to lose the lake.
And our next speaker is Sandy Collins, who is Chair of the Subcommittee Reviewing Staff's Recommendation to Not Dredge. And I think in the room, we have a number of people from the task force, but the technical lead on this task force was Dr. Chris Jones from George Mason University Water Resources Group. But with that, Sandy Collins, I'll turn things over to you.
Thanks. Good morning. So as Sharon said, our Subcommittee evaluated the staff's recommendation not to dredge, but instead to resume the master planning process for Lake Aketink Park. And we evaluated two different areas. The first was the cost and environmental impact associated with the recommendation, and the second was the process and the authority for reaching that recommendation. And unfortunately, much of the request for information that was submitted for that second line of research had to go through the FOIA process, and we did not receive enough information in time to present findings with respect to that. But we did have three key findings. Actually, we had numerous findings, but three key findings. The first was that the county's analysis of cost for the initial dredge and the subsequent maintenance dredging relied on very conservative assumptions, and that all evaluation of alternatives, including that of dredging, really needs to be based on the best available information, and the same best available of information, so that you can compare all the alternatives on an apples-to-apples basis, so that they can be considered equally. The second is that through our review of all the information and the consultants' reports, it became very clear how important it was for the community to be involved in the master planning process, for the review of alternatives, for the review of conceptual design documents and cost estimates. All of this obviously being consistent with the Park Authority procedures. And third, as Alan was saying, understanding the importance of the lake to the entire Aketink Creek system, the downstream system in particular. So that stream restoration is incredibly important to maintaining the health of the lake and the system, Aketink Creek system as a whole, but that that stream restoration efforts really need to focus on those areas that have the greatest erosion, so the greatest input of sediment to the system, regardless of whether or not those areas are on county-owned property. And with that, I'm going to hand you over to John to talk about the findings from his Subcommittee.
John Cook?
Thank you. So we were asked to look at options other than the full dredge and the no dredge option, and we did find that the choice between a full dredge and a no dredge is a false choice, that there are in fact options that would preserve a lake of a size to be determined that can be preserved in an economical fashion that serves the community interests that you have heard about. There are three land features in the lake area, right? You have lake, you have wetlands, and you have grasslands. And we looked at each of those. We considered the value of biodiversity. We considered environmental impacts. We considered the community and social impacts of lake and various options, and studied them, and they're written in our report. Some context, the original lake was 110 acres. The current lake is 49 acres. We ran scenarios for a 41-acre lake, a 33-acre lake, and a 22-acre lake. I don't know if you can see this picture, but 41 acres is essentially the round area. It's what you can see from the marina, if you know the area. 33 is a somewhat arbitrary number, but it does track where some of the sediment inflow would be at a certain period of time. 22 acres is more for comparison's sake. It's really, I think, too small to do some of the things that, you know, we're looking at. But for example, we have a chart of cost numbers in the appendix. Dredging a 41-acre lake costs $33.8 million. Now, that does not include the cost of what you do with the dredge spoils, which leads to the next finding that we made, which is that most dredge spoils can and should remain on-site. One way that they remain on-site is, for example, if you dredge, just to pick random numbers so the math works, if you were to dredge 35 acres, well, half of that material could be used to fill in the other 15 that you chose not to dredge, and that would take care of half your material right there. We have options for building islands in the lake, and you can study them in our report. That's a way to obviously take dredge spoils, pile them up, and you can also do things with wildlife and other ecological diversity by forming islands. We considered having dewatering sites adjacent to the lake. You know, you can spread out several feet of dredge materials right next to the lake, and when they dry, you put seed on top of them, and in one cycle, one growing cycle, you have a grassland, and your dewatering site is completely taken care of. And then we also explored sites that are adjacent to the park that have been mentioned in the past but not fully studied as places to take some of the dredge materials. The issue of the final dredge, final lake size, and the mix between lake, wetlands, and grassland is something that needs to be determined and studied with community input. There is a regulatory requirement of no net loss of wetlands, so that has to be factored in. Can't dry up the existing wetlands. Needs to be preservation of that. There also needs to be a study of the future of the dam, regardless of what happens with the lake. There are impacts to the dam that are going to need to be dealt with. And lastly, maybe most importantly is, you need to make a decision now. That doesn't mean today, but in the next few months, because time is not on our side. It's not on the community's side. And the lake is constantly changing, and so you can't wait until you have the perfect answer and then start the process of work, because by the time you start, things have changed. So there should be a direction given now. Dredging should start in two years. You can put together a group to decide, as you work through this with experts, how you want that dredge to look. But the starting point is in this report, and the data that you need to get started is here. The value of the lake's been described, and preserving it is an absolute essential. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And lastly, one of our task force members chose to do some additional research on a potential processing site and transportation hub. The task force unanimously supported his work and included his report as an addendum to the findings report. And with that, I would like to call on Martin, or Shep, Shepard, for a few words about what he found. Shep?
Thank you, Sharon. I'm Shep, and after serving my time on John Cook's Subcommittee, I wrote the findings on the use of Robinson Terminal as a dewatering and transportation hub for Lake Aketink dredging operations. You've heard about the You’ve heard about the task force and its good work. We found value in the lake. We asked questions about the analysis. We came up with some alternatives to a full dredge. The county brought on WPS and Limnotec to answer the question, what’s this wetland thing all about? No one was looking, however, at how the county could approach a full dredge and its projected maintenance and make it work. Two big issues with the dredge: where to de-water and how to get rid of it. From there, there were a couple of scenarios that came about in the Arcadis analysis. One was to cut a swath of trees out of the watershed leading to Wakefield Park. The other one was to de-water in a local industrial area, but both had trucks carrying the material away. And the worst of those scenarios had trucks, 95 trucks, round trips per day going down narrow neighborhood streets. The worst is the DPWES took advantage of the community’s rejection of those plans, added tremendous cost increase on the initial dredge, introduced a 20-year payout for maintenance, called it too hard, and pushed it off to the Park Authority to come up with a plan for a swamp. On the map, Robinson Terminal is close to the lake, allowing a pipeline to take the slurry along the same Norfolk Southern right-of-way used in a previous dredge. No trees lost. The terminal has rail sightings, which can be used to load rail cars and take them to parts of southwestern Virginia and other states who need the type of fill to use in coal mine field reclamation projects. The terminal also has a non-residential access road, no trucks on narrow neighborhood streets. Moving dredge material by rail reduces carbon footprint for the equivalent truck travel by 87% at a lower per ton per mile cost. Innovative approaches outlined in my findings provide a partial payback for operational expenses if managed properly. Robinson Terminal is a wholly-owned subsidiary of the Beos organization. It happens to be on the same road as the Washington Post. We learned in August that management was seeking a lesssee as it planned to cease warehousing operations. We informed county staff about these plans, and they contacted terminal management. The county proposed site use, again, requiring demolition of buildings. Building demolition does not align with the management’s leasing plans for the property. And recently, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has been doing studies on dewatering inside of buildings. That information is still incoming, and I will share it as soon as I get it with county In conclusion, the task force finds the Robinson Terminal opportunity has not been fully explored. We find that any future dredging alternative for the lake would be incomplete without a thorough and imaginative consideration. This approach aligns with our commitment to innovation, sustainability, and the preservation of our cherished Lake Atticink. Subject to your questions, this concludes my portion of the presentation.
Thank you very much, Shep, and thank you for your hard work. Shep is bold enough to pick up the phone and call individuals with Norfolk Southern about the possibility of using tracks and right-of-way and, you know, and connecting to, you know, mine reclamation procedures in other parts of the state. And this is definitely out-of-the-box research, but something that we should look into more. So, thank you, Shep. All right. The task force was not asked to make recommendations, but instead, we were asked to provide findings to help inform the Board of Supervisors as they make a decision regarding the future of Lake Atticink. The findings report provides information on the value of the lake to residents and analysis of the recommendation to not proceed with a full dredge and an exploration of other potential options. The task force found that, and here are the summary of the findings, amenities and activities at Lake Atticink are not readily available at other nearby parks, which is especially important as the park is surrounded by and serves communities with a high degree of cultural and economic diversity unlike any other county lakefront parks. This is a one Fairfax issue. When considering sustainable alternatives, a smaller lake is feasible as part of a stream lake complex, but a full dredge needs to be reevaluated and compared against alternatives under consideration. However, a plan that includes maintenance, dredging, and any lake option, and an invasive species management plan in all options will be essential. Lake Atticink Dam is over 80 years old, and any solution to the lake must take into account preserving future options to replace, repair, or remove the dam. The park’s facilities needs attention, and the larger issue of dredging stalled the master plan process. Identifying the desired experiences, amenities, and activities at Lake Atticink Park will help to inform the alternatives. It is a finding of the task force that the community should and needs to be at the table during such discussions. The task force finds that conditions within the watershed continue to change, and the lake continues to fill with sediment. The task force agrees that a decision about a general approach now will allow the master plan process to move forward while continued technical study of alternative runs in tandem. We are pretty much finished with our presentation and ready for questions, but let me just say thank you to the Board of Supervisors and, in particular, Supervisor Walkinshaw, Supervisor Lusk, and Chairman Jeff McKay for providing this opportunity for the community to review and to respond to the staff recommendation to not dredge. I want to thank you, I want to say thank you to staff, especially Charles Smith, Chris Harrington, for their support, and I especially want to thank our consultant, WSP Limnotec. And I hope that we get to work with them in the future, because they brought to the table some really interesting ideas, and they were a pleasure to work with. Thank you to Marcia Pape, our support from Supervisor Walkinshaw’s office, and she put in a couple of all-nighters working on the report and getting it posted. So with that, I will stop talking, and we’re looking forward to hearing your questions. Thank you.
And thank you, Chairman Bolivar. And before we get to that, just wanted to give context, we spent about half of the meeting time on this so far, and I know we will spend whatever we need to spend with board member input, but I just wanted to give, advise our Office of Economic and Energy efforts to look to shorten the next presentation by at least 20 minutes, so we’ll have maybe 20 minutes to do an overview of the next one. So just for context, and we’re going to go, and we’ll spend what we need to spend here, but I just wanted to make sure we’re all aware of the importance of this discussion, which is where we’re going to go to next. I’m going to turn to Chairman McKay for that.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Stork, and also want to recognize Delegate Vivian Watts, who is with us back there in the corner. Thank you for joining us today.
She was a member of the committee.
Absolutely. And I want to thank all the members of the task force, because I do think the quality of the report speaks for itself, and I appreciate the fact that these are findings and that specific recommendations, obviously, are going to fall in our lap with coordination with the community to have to make what, obviously, is going to be a tough decision, no matter what we decide. It’s not going to be easy, and pointing out all the equity pieces, I think, is a critical part of the conversation, and I do think was a part of the conversation that was completely missing from the beginning. And I also want to acknowledge the community being upset with the recommendations of DPWES, and I want to extend that community to this board, too, because there was no member of this board that was not also upset with the recommendations that were made to us. And so I do have a couple of questions, though, I just want to make sure that I understand, because in several occasions, it’s been mentioned that further study and analysis needs to be done. We know we need to do a master planning process, and we’ve talked about that, but we also know the sense of urgency in terms of time. So help reconcile, for me, the need for additional study with the urgency of making a decision sooner rather than later.
Did you want to?
Chairman McKay, I think what I would suggest is a design-build concept, right? So sometimes you can start building something before you have it fully designed, because as you, once you have sort of a general plan, you’re going to need to dig in there. And, for example, there are regulatory rules that, you know, we don’t know fully, and you’re going to have regulators step in and say, well, wait a minute, you can’t do this, you can’t do that. You have to look at different sizes. Well, how much lake do you want? How much grassland do you want? What’s the net benefits, plus and minus, sort of, the cost? And those things are going to adjust and shift as you go forward. So you sort of have to do the specifics as you are designing what you’re going to do, because they’re going to change, and we don’t know all the answers. The dam, I mean, is a big unknown, and, you know, the original thought at the beginning, we were told, well, don’t worry about the dam. Well, part of what I think we all determined was, you can’t not worry about the dam, but you’re not also going to get a final answer. You know, you could wait for years to get a state or a federal decision, and even then, it could always change. So there needs to be a little flexibility going forward, but if you wait for all the answers, we’ll be here 10 years from now having the same conversation again, and there won’t be a lake. So you have to learn as you go along.
Yeah. So is your sense in terms of how that lines up with the master planning process, is it your sense that the master planning process has to contain a conclusion of options, then? That mirror what? What I’m trying to understand is, I know the lake is filling up fast, we know, we’ve seen that, and I guess what I’m trying to understand in my own mind, if we made a decision today to go with a smaller lake, obviously, that would profoundly impact what the master plan for the park would look like. If we made a decision today to do nothing, that would also profoundly impact. And so is there a utility of doing a master planning process that incorporates both of those, or is it better to do some more additional technical analysis before even entering into a master plan process?
And again, I don’t speak for everyone on the committee, but I think all of our sense is, you need to make a decision in the current timeframe about the general picture. Do you want a lake or not? And whether it’s 49 acres, or 41 acres, or 37 acres, you can figure that out as you go along. But if you’re going to have a lake, you need to dredge it like in 2026, and so you need to start. And then you can have your master plan group, and you can say, here’s your parameters, here’s your budget, start with this, and work on the specifics. But if you don’t make that decision about what your lake’s going to look like, then nobody knows what to do, and you’ll just end up with another report in two years, and half the lake will be gone.
Yeah, I guess the reason I’m asking, and this is a hard question, because we’re, you know, we’re out of time. We were out of time a while ago in a lot of ways, and so, you know, what I’m trying to understand in terms of the master planning process itself is, does that run in tandem with the additional technical analysis? And the reason why this is so important to us, I think, is because we were believing, you know, this report obviously could help inform the master planning process, and what the community needs to know is, through that process, if you end up with a smaller lake, here’s what the overall park would look like, and here are the opportunities to introduce new things, here are the challenges with the smaller lake in terms of things that might be lost, versus if you didn’t do anything, you know, here’s what the park would look like, and here’s how we could amenitize it. Because what is clear here is, we’re going to have a robust park here no matter what. What is unclear is what that park will look like, and I guess if this report is to inform the master planning process, it would seem to me like if we kicked off the master planning process, there need to be alternative master plans in there that can accommodate those visions. And I think one of the challenges for the community, that I have heard at least, is we all want to save the lake as a starting point, without a doubt. If for some reason the lake looks dramatically different than it does today, or no longer exists, what does the park look like, and what is in it for the community? From our equity standpoint, what amenities are in there for the community to benefit from in the same way they have benefited for decades on the full lake that’s there?
Well, I don’t think there’s anybody on our task force who supports seeing the lake go away. Now, you know, you guys have to decide how much money you can spend and what the ultimate general parameters would look like, and the options for looking at are in that report. So it’s not that there aren’t findings here, there’s 150 pages of findings that can start a process. But if you just say to a master plan group, it’s just a new group of people, you say, well, start from scratch, decide what you want, you’ll get two years of study, and, the study’s been done. The community wants the lake, and you determine the budget, and that will dictate much of the mix between lake and other features. And then you have a group of people, and you say, here’s your budget, go build what the community wants.
Okay.
We were specifically asked not to make recommendations, so, but to dig a little bit more into, or a lot more, into the staff recommendation and present findings. I urge members of the board to read through the executive summaries, especially, of the Subcommittee’s reports. They’re excellent. There’s excellent, just phenomenal, expertise on this task force, with some recommendations for, well, if you did this or did that, how much you could save from what the original staff estimates were, or the original consultant estimates were. But it’s up to, really, the Board of Supervisors to decide, let’s move forward with a full dredge like we started out with, and let’s use some of, you know, these cost savings. Or, let’s consider an option, maybe, for a smaller lake, which could also provide, you know, some creativity for how to use other parts of what had been the original size of the lake. So, but that’s something that we were not asked to vote on, but that’s something that the board needs to look at and decide, you know, what they would like to do.
Okay. And I think my last technical question, it doesn’t need to be answered here, because I think it’s a staff question, but given the findings that are in this report, you know, there are financial ramifications that have been outlined. What’s unclear to me is how those financial implications are guided by existing funding sources that we have, or other grant or financing opportunities that may exist out there. And that’s part of that regulatory conversation. We’re going to have to dig deeper with staff, because I need, you know, I think all of us want to understand, one, how we can maximize available dollars to come up with a good solution here, and how much of the design of what we’re doing here can steer us in a more favorable direction. It was mentioned earlier on about the financing that we got from the state, you know, are there additional opportunities? I know there’s some challenges with the Army Corps that have to be addressed. As Supervisor Cook mentioned, there’s a number of regulatory issues here that we’re going to have to sort out, and so we’re going to need a staff response to the regulatory pieces, how we understand them, and how they might inform potential funding options for the board to consider as part of having to make a final decision on this. And I think that’s an obvious next step. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I’m going to go to Supervisor Walkinshaw, and then the other board-matter member, Supervisor Lusk.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I’ll be briefed, and I’ll make sure my colleagues have the opportunity to ask questions and share their comments. I’ve have the opportunity to ask questions and share their comments, I've been immersed in this. I did all the thank yous last week, so I won't reiterate those thank yous. One of the things that I think was really valuable in this process was the opportunity for the task force to work alongside the consultants. And we will share the consultants' deliverables with the board, and the questions they answered were the questions the task force posed. So throughout the process, the task force had the opportunity to say, "We'd like to learn more about this, what about this, and what about that?" And there were a few things in there that surprised me, and I think were different from our original thoughts and impressions when this process started. One is, in the do-nothing scenario, not a scenario that I support, but in that scenario, the lake would not turn into a swamp, or even what we usually think of as a wetland. It would slowly, over time, become what's called, this was a new word for me, an anastomizing stream network, which is basically a braided network of streams. That work also showed that that would happen over the course of four to 50 years, starting at the upper end of the creek, of the lake where the creek enters. So I won't define that as slow or fast, but as has been happening since 2008, it would continue to fill in and become that braided stream network, with the area that's now the marina likely still being an open body of water as long as 50 years, a much smaller body of water, but still a body of water. You know, I, in the board matter, asked the task force to look at the hybrid option, and John improved the marketing on that significantly, and termed it a smaller lake option, which is a much better description. My gut was, it had real potential, and I think the task force's work has helped us to illuminate that potential for that option. But it's important to say, I think it's a potential option, and one that we should, in my view, focus on and study more. If you go through the findings, you'll see there's a lot of different iterations of that option, a lot of options within the option. The cost estimates that we have at this point are rough, the maintenance dredging cycle is uncertain and would be temporary, and as John noted, there are real potential regulatory and permitting challenges. And I'll just quote from the WSP Limnotec deliverables, they said that placing fill in lakes and wetlands can be, quote, "particularly challenging," and is a, quote, "extensive process that's new to regulators." So we're a little bit on terra incognito in terms of this permitting and regulatory process. So real potential, I do believe that we should focus in on it, we cannot start from scratch, as we did in 2016, and study every potential option under the sun. But I think it's important for the community to hear that there's a lot more to learn about this option before we can promise that it is going to be the outcome. You know, that said, just in terms of moving forward, I'm excited to hear what, how my colleagues feel and what they think here today. We're going to have two new board members tomorrow night, so we're going to have, I've already talked to Chairman Bolova about making sure that they are briefed on the task force's findings and hear them. It's my intention to come to the board with a board matter early next year, to lay out the next steps in this process, has to include broad community engagement, and I think some of the findings around surveys and community engagement are going to really help inform that process. And as I said, additional analysis of the smaller lake options, in the hopes that that's a path that we can pursue. Thank you for the time today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Waksaw, Supervisor Lusk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to also thank the task force for the exceptional work that they did in bringing forward these findings, and I'll say, I am particularly appreciative of the small lake options. I think that's going to be helpful, and understand there's a lot of work that still needs to be done to determine if that's going to be possible, but just appreciate that that is a conceivable possibility. Second, I wanted to ask, and just thinking about the impacts to the neighborhoods, and hearing Mr. Shepherd talk about the number of vehicles, and I'm re-traumatized here thinking about that, the 95 vehicles per day that would be traversing through neighborhoods, and acknowledging that in the full dredge option, we would be doing that every five years. Do we have any thoughts, and I didn't see this yet in the report and the findings, but clearly with the three different lake options, there's going to be some maintenance schedule for each of those options. And I guess the question is, do we have any sense of what that maintenance schedule might be? And if not, then I guess that's going to be a part of the research and analysis that will be going forward from here.
If I could just address that, I think Limnotec suggested to us some sort of five-year time period for some sort of mini-maintenance dredge-type operation. So it is, you know, obviously, the more often you do something, but remember, that's not a tens of millions of dollars thing, it's a much smaller number.
Yeah.
And in fact, we had a presentation about, which, like, was it, like, Barcroft, they do maintenance every year.
Yes.
Basically, it's just a, it's just part of what you do.
Okay.
And if you do that, you prevent the big buildups that have the super cost, and that was extremely helpful for us to see. And it's a cost, just like, you put a roof on a building like this, and you do a new HVAC every few years, you have to maintain a lake.
Did they provide any cost structuring for those options, then, in each of the three different iterations?
For your question.
So the three, the three different lake options, the 41, the 31, and the 22?
It would depend on, you know, the more often you do it, the less you have to dig, so you're pulling, I mean, there are costs per cubic yard of sediment in the appendix, but that depends, how big is your lake?
Right.
And are you doing this every five years, every 10 years? I got the sense from Limnotec that doing less and doing it more often seemed to be what they were talking about in the last presentation.
Okay.
Which is what Lake Barcroft does, and so they purchased their own equipment.
Yes.
And so they just use their own equipment, and, you know, they constantly do maintenance of the lake. And that way, there's, you know, less that they have to do. They, that, it was a really fascinating presentation, they're a much smaller lake.
Right.
But they pay for the lake, and they pay for the maintenance themselves, and they've learned a lot.
Okay.
So anyway, that was, you should, you know, read a little bit more
Yeah.
of the findings, you know, to learn a little bit about what, but they purchased their own equipment, which was, which was interesting.
Mr. Chairman, if I could
Supervisor Ross, yes.
weigh in a little bit on Lake Barcroft. After the lake, after Lake Barcroft was lost, after, in Hurricane Agnes in 1972, the community came together and established themselves under Section 319 as a watershed improvement district. They are their own local government governing body.
WID.
The WID. And so the WID is governed by a board, and all of the residents of Lake Barcroft pay, I think it's about $500 a year, as part of their being in the WID. And that helps pay for the maintenance of the rather extraordinary dam at Lake Barcroft, and the dredging. And because of the way Lake Barcroft is, it's sort of like a great big U with a lot of little coves, they tend to look at doing this particular section of the lake this year, and then this particular section of the lake next year. So they're not doing a full lake dredge, they're doing sections of it over time. And, yes, they used to hire a contractor to do it, and now they have, because they've been able to break it into smaller chunks, if you will, they have their own dredging materials, and they have dewatering site onsite also.
And a WID is probably not feasible
Yeah.
for Lake Acateque, or a much larger watershed, and, you know, we're comprised of, you know, shopping centers, and highways, and, you know, a lot of transportation that flows into the watershed.
Yeah, Lake Barcroft, I think, is the only WID in the Commonwealth.
Right.
There may be one other.
And if I could just jump in real quick, the frequency of dredging really needs to be determined, you know, everything that was in the Limnotec report was really a high-level evaluation, and one of our primary
Right.
issues was really making sure we understand what is our rate of deposition,
Correct.
because that is really going to, you know, inform what size lake?
Yes.
Is it going to be the full lake? Is it going to be a smaller lake? How much is coming in, over what period of time, what depth you want to achieve, and then you'll have some understanding of your frequency of maintenance dredging.
Okay.
And Shep?
Supervisor Lusk, remember, trucks don't have to be in your neighborhood.
Right.
Okay? If a permanent dredge facility and dewatering facility is established at Robinson Terminal,
Right.
where there is rail that can move it out.
Sure.
Okay, you have that opportunity. Likewise, if rail is decided not to work.
Right.
It is a non-residential road straight in. So if the county determines that it can do dewatering in buildings, and doesn't have to demolish them.
Right.
Or if the county purchases the property for use as a long-term facility, for use for other dredge opportunities, and even for having Lake Barcroft bring their dried materials to us, and have us ship it out.
Yeah.
Then there are a whole set of circumstances that can be established in there, without having trucks in their neighborhood.
No, I was going to say, that's my last question, is I was going to commend you for what you were recommending. I really like this idea of using the Robinson Terminal, but I do want to clarify, when the staff reached out to them, they said, "No, we're now recommending we go back. Do you have any additional information from conversations with them that would indicate that they are now supportive?" I'm just trying to understand, where are we, at least in the conversation and discussion?
If we could make that very brief, because we do need to move on, give other people an opportunity.
Mr. Smith and I had great conversations about Robinson Terminal. The county's proposal to Robinson Terminal is, we'd want to use your facility, we'd like to lease it, but we have to demolish buildings. That is unacceptable to Robinson Terminal management, okay? Like I said, Army Corps of Engineers has been doing research on, and has actual experience now in Massachusetts on doing dewatering operations inside large structures similar to the warehouses that are there. Those things still need to be worked out, but it is a possibility that the lease could occur, or if the county so desires, a long-term transportation hub
All right.
for all countywide dredging operations can be established through the purchase of the property.
Okay, well, I'll say this, I appreciate that clarification and that information. Thank you.
Staff should also, I think, reevaluate, does, do they have to demolish, you know, the warehouse, you know, or may, you know, so more of a discussion and a reevaluation needs to take place.
All right, thank you. Other board members?
I'm just going to very quickly add my thanks to both Chairwoman Bolova and Jeff, the whole task force. It's not the first time that citizens have brought together, you know, brought to the table some pretty interesting solutions to this problem, and I think there's a lot more that needs to move forward where I'm sitting. I haven't seen that, it's hard to do without seeing the numbers, but we got to at least have that small lake there, it is too important, too important a resource. And I think it's going to take a long-term investment. The dam is something, too, that, we can't forget about it. But for the county, I think it's clearly a lesson in maintenance, and how we need to take a regular look at the assets that we've got here before we go build shiny new ones. We've got to make sure we're taking care of what we've got.
Thank you, Supervisor Alkoff.
Just very quickly, yeah, I do, as a board member who doesn't represent any area close to this, I do look forward to getting more details, more information on the various proposals, and the costs. And not just the costs, but the financing as well, for how those costs will be covered, so I do look forward to that.
I actually had one quick question. Did the for-bay issue ever?
Yeah, the problem with the for-bay, there's a concern that in a big storm, it would wash out, and everything would just be pushed into the lake, so I think
So that doesn't save you.
county staff suggested that the for-bay was not going to work, if I got that right, Charles.
Any other comments from my colleagues? I would just add to that, I know that there's, the state has been focused very heavily on dams and water retention, and that's, I think that's changing, in terms of their expectations and the regulatory view, so I think that comment earlier was one that's very important to this process, and I agree. And then the last piece is what I think we all recognize, which is, there clearly is some downstream impacts of this, and, you know, I, of course, would think about that, given the impact on Mount Vernon District, and obviously, Acateque and the bays and river that it flows into. So these issues do matter, not just for our Acateque, but also for the greater community and Chesapeake Bay ultimately. So with that, I don't see
Actually, if I could, I should have done this in the beginning, a lot of folks are here who have been part of the task force, and if they could just stand and be recognized, I would appreciate that.
Yes, please.
Tremendous expertise.
You all have given, you know, a lot of your own time for this, and we much appreciate your work. Thank you all, and our deepest thanks to the task force for what you've brought to this conversation, and obviously, we have tough decisions to make, but we have, I think, a lot more clarity about what our options are, and appreciate very much the work you've done.
Thank you.
And we are going to take just a few more minutes to have staff do a quick, it would be a very, very quick overview of something that's pretty dense and complex, but I think if they could just give you an overview, that'll give you a sense of what is coming and what's available to our communities. And they will not do this justice, but at least they can flip through the slide deck and give you a sense of what's out there, and then we'll look for the next Environment Committee meeting to further drill down. There's also information that's been presented to you all in, previously, so this should just reinforce previous conversations and presentations that you had. And with that, I'm going to let John Morale do the update. You'll see the progress that we've made in the presentation about how we are tracking our results. Results have been a key part of our conversations in previous Environment Committee meetings, and how do we track our goals and results, and I know committee members have spoken about that a great deal. This data is going to our climate dashboard, and the climate dashboard is, will be our major source of how we share this information to the community. And I would ask folks who just came from this meeting, if you could take your conversations outside, please. If you could take your conversations outside, we'd greatly appreciate that, so we can complete the conversation. And we will stay at least a few minutes over, but I recognize that we're going into lunch, and then we have a special guest that we all need to recognize, and we can't afford to miss out, or we'll be on the naughty list, so, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board of Supervisors, I'm John Morale, Acting Director of the Office of Environmental and Energy Coordination. Happy holidays to you all. I'm joined by Matt Myers and Allison Homer, two team members who are very familiar with this material, and they're here to help out with questions as needed. Pleased to give this presentation as a very high-level summary of how we're doing. Additional highlights are included with this packet as an addendum, and a staff report detailing this year's activity will be sent to you early next year. I will note that when we presented to you a year ago, we spoke of plans to launch pilots and programs. I'm happy to report today that multiple programs have been launched, as described in the addendum, and the county is very engaged with residents in the private sector on climate action, and we have significant momentum for future gains. As you know, the county is working to address both the cause and effects of climate change. On the cause side, we're doing our part in the global effort to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in the community, that's the Communitywide Energy and Climate Action Plant, and in government operations, in the Operational Energy Strategy. On the effect side, we are adapting and building resilience to the impacts of climate change that we experience locally, such as extreme heat, severe storms, and flooding. True to our name, the Office of Environmental and Energy Coordination True to our name, the Office of Environmental and Energy Coordination coordinates inter-agency efforts on implementation of these plans. Over two dozen agencies and well over a hundred staff are involved in this activity, as well as many stakeholders in the community. Many actions I'll be speaking of and, and in the progress report are implemented by multiple agencies or agencies other than OEEC. We're merely the messenger today and will give credit where it's due. First, I'll describe how we're doing the work and then I'll describe the results or outcomes to date from this work. The county is responsible for implementing all three climate plans simultaneously, each with dozens of priorities and strategies. There are certain themes that appear in all three plans, such as development codes or natural resources. Additionally, the staff across county agencies responsible for implementing these plans are very similar, if not the same, people. Therefore, for greatest efficiency, OEEC organized the hundred-and-fifty-eight strategies from all three plans into a consolidated matrix, combined duplicates and considered implementation responsibilities. Six groups emerged, shown here, ranging from Group One of Funding Coordination and Legislative, and all agencies are part of that, uh, through to Community Age, Education Engagement and Incentives, uh, Group Five is County Facilities and Operations and Group Six, Data and Research. Now, the hundreds of strategies and action items from all three climate plans have been organized and consolidated for clearer, for our internal progress tracking. This image presents the twenty-two high-level, what we call, strategy roll-ups. And, and so these twenty-two strategies dispersed across the six groups are, roll-up all the implementation, uh, actions from the three plans. So for example, uh, in the middle, under Group Three, the purple, uh, row, top purple row, Incentives for Communities Strategy, actually includes six strategies, which collectively have twenty-three implementation actions. Twelve of those implementation actions are underway, or fifty-two percent. But it's important to note that the status of strategies should not be interpreted as being equivalent to outcome metrics. For example, completing two out of four actions from the plan for promoting solar incentives, or fifty percent of actions for that strategy, does not mean that fifty percent of the county is now operating on solar power. So for clarity, the metrics are, are tracked separately and will be discussed in the upcoming slides. And again, a detailed progress report with descriptions of each action item, strategy and strategy roll-up will be provided to the board in January, once all the end-of-year numbers are in. For expediency, I'm going to transition from the work progress, work process to the results or outcomes. This slide presents a state of the county with respect to climate ma, metrics, the C cap goals. The headline goal is carbon neutrality by twenty-fifty, and the top bar on this chart shows community carbon emissions down thirty percent since two thousand and five, slightly behind the pace of where we should be if we make linear progress, but still doing well. That thirty percent reduction is due to a cleaner grid and reduced energy use in buildings. Yes, in twenty-twenty-two, total electricity and natural gas use in buildings across Fairfax County, homes, businesses and industry, is down eight percent since twenty-ten, and that's in the face of economic growth, population growth and so forth. And that's not just a pandemic effect. Twenty-nineteen energy use was lower than twenty-ten as well. Similarly, here are progress bars for county operations or implementation of the Operational Energy Strategy. We're making good progress toward carbon neutrality with successes in some areas and challenges in some others. We're making strides in energy efficiency, uh, and have strong results in green building construction, including the county's first lead platinum building delivered by Capital Facilities from DPWAS, which was the Woodlawn Fire Station. Installation of renewable systems were slow to begin with, but with our first four projects completed this year, we are gaining momentum. And that, those were done in collaboration with Capital Facilities, the Park Authority, Department of Housing and the Fire Department. Resilience means being able to bounce back fully from shocks and stressors that come our way without suffering permanent loss. There are dozens of performance indicators in the resilient Fairfax Plan. Here we show a few key metrics for each of the major hazards. Note that some of these have a goal of decreasing, such as buildings at risk of flash flooding, whereas others have a goal of increasing, such as cooling centers near heat islands. So we added directional arrows to indicate the desired movement for each metric on the right-hand side. It is also important to note that our resilience efforts may seem like running on a treadmill that is getting faster. As we continue to face warmer, wetter, weirder conditions, we are working to enhance our resilience to such conditions. Therefore, unlike emissions reduction, there may not be such a thing as achieving one-hundred percent resilience. Nevertheless, the county's resilience efforts are crucial to ensuring we do not fall off the back of the treadmill, which in this metaphor would mean permanent loss of life, property and resources. All of these metrics and more raw data will be provided on the updated Climate Action Dashboard, or what we're calling version one-point-five. We aim to have this dashboard updated for viewing on the county website, uh, by the end of this week. And, uh, last, in framing priorities for calendar twenty-twenty-four, I'd like to emphasize that emissions reduction is a national and global effort and much is beyond our control or even influence. For emissions reduction, we'll be more clearly defining the factors beyond county control to better calibrate our efforts and expectations to ensure that we are focused on making the most of what the county can do best. And I, just as a reminder, um, if we want to electrify our fleet, but we can't purchase equipment if the vehicle manufacturers don't make it. On the other hand, boosting resilience and adaptation is a very local activity and something the county has more control over, and the county is a first responder. For resilience, we'll continue to build upon the foundation of work in place to enhance flood risk reduction, heat risks and improve storm resilience. And finally, for both emissions reduction and resilience, we'll continue to grow our community-facing programs at broader scale and enhance the visibility of all of our activity and results. Thank you.
Thank you very much, John, and I think the, the point of this is that this is a funnel and we start with cause and effect. I think a great way to summarize how the county is approaching this C cap and our Operational Energy, uh, Strategy is the, if you will, the, how we move forward and how do we address the effect is, is the resiliency plan that we put together. I think the county, we're, the board, we're well-positioned with our goals and I think the approach is, how do we get this stuff done, which is really the nuts and bolts of what, um, John's and the, the, the team has put together and how we work this through. And as you can see, it is incredibly complex. You can see, I, I love, I thought of it as the, the, um, the European Union flag, I don't know if you've ever seen the European Union flag, they have all the individual company, country flags around it. That's not unlike what we're doing here with, with the county logo and then all the different county departments that particularly are involved with this. So, very complex and very difficult to, to keep all these things move forward, but we are moving it forward. And with that, I wanna turn to the chairman and see if you have any comments. We're gonna keep them brief, because we know Santa is waiting for us, so.
No, I'm, he just walked in. Uh, no, I'm, I'm, I'm actually, um, I, I'm actually, uh, just, just wanted to thank, uh, John and the team for presenting this in a really clear way for us. I mean, I particularly like the graphs that are tracking progress and, and making us aware of the asterisks of what is within our control and what is in our ability to influence. And I do think as we start looking at, you know, this important question of how the community can help us, uh, tracking that is gonna be a lot more difficult than what we're doing internally, but so necessary, because we know without their engagement and involvement, we can't achieve these overall goals. And so I, I just really appreciate the way it's been presented and, and the update that we have here and, uh, looking forward to continuing to see the progress in these areas and, and the good work that you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any, yes, Supervisor Alcorn?
Uh, just very quickly, on slide seven, by the way, I love the way you presented these slides that showed like where we should be and, you know, where, what our goal is. The transport one, EV registrations, charge up Fairfax, I know we're out there, we're pushing it, you know, it's going in the program phase. I'm really glad we're doing that, but I see this, since half of our residents basically don't live in a place where there's overnight charging, um, as you come back, as we go into the program, I'd encourage you to, to also be thinking and come back with any additional thoughts on how we can help move that needle, because EV is gonna be one of our biggest challenges going forward.
Other colleagues, and if not, I have a couple notes. We had our, kind of our JET, Joint Environmental Task Force, kind of informal group, we met yesterday and, and it was an excellent meeting. There's a new, um, leader on the part of the, of the, uh, the schools that is very knowledgeable. She previously was the, the, essentially the, that leader on the, uh, for DC schools and very knowledgeable and very impressive, and I know, I think as most of us were. A couple of things that came up, the one is, is that, John, you mentioned something that I, or actually something I was surprised about and then it was reiterated, I think, by the schools, and I just wanna make sure the group was aware of this and see if there's any legislative issue that we need to address, but if you could address the, the solar insulation challenges that we continue to have.
Thank you. One of the latest hurdles has been Dominion Energy, uh, requiring, uh, essentially dark fiber, fiber optic cable from large solar installations to the nearest substation. And they, they argue that they need that for safety, because they wanna know if the output from this, a large, uh, solar system goes down. And they want the, the customer to, to pay for that, that, um, fiber installation. And so, uh, this was something that they raised in the spring and, and a, a number of solar installers, uh, sued and, and brought a case to the SCC and the SCC put it on hold for smaller systems, but it still applies to, to larger systems. So, um, this is something that is still, uh, this is, Dominion's the only utility that we know of in the country who, uh, calls for this and puts the cost on the customer. So, um, this is a, this is a matter that continues to, uh, uh, possibly face litigation and, and is a hurdle, because it increases the cost of solar systems, whether it's, whether the, the county were to, to buy it directly or through a power purchase agreement.
And John, this is, wouldn't necessarily involve an individual homeowner, but it would involve pretty much any county or school project. Is that, I just wanna give people context for that.
Yes, it, it, it doesn't apply to a small residential or small commercial system, but, uh, generally above two-hundred kilowatts, I believe.
So our fire station roofs would be?
The fire stations are okay, but, uh, uh, possibility that things like the Monument Garage or, uh, certainly a school-sized installation would, would be subject to this.
All right, thank you. And just a couple of closing comments and then I know we'll, we'll get going. The, the, um, we had a, a NIP that was out, the litter and zero waste, uh, waste update from the county executive, so just make sure you're aware of that and, and take a look at that. We, again, the JET, we looked at the waste, transportation, energy and workforce development, had a lot of good information on that. We're gonna get back together again in about six months. Uh, with that, the last comments have to do with two amazing environmental leaders that we have, I know, I see, I see Penny muttering to herself. Sorry, Penny. But we know, we know the environmental impact that both of you had in, in somewhat different ways, but, but I think it goes to the core of the board and the value of the individual elements that each of us bring to these conversations and the power of the collective of us working together as a board to get outcomes that we otherwise wouldn't get. Penny, Supervisor Gross, your work on so many regional authorities, um, and, and obviously your Chesapeake Bay and water, amazing amounts of work over decades and that we all are building on top of that, so my deep thanks and your, your previous chairing of this committee for, for a long time as well. And then Supervisor Faust, and your work and your advocacy and frankly, your help with me to get me fully understanding of the opportunities that we had, particularly when it came to climate change, and your, your advocacy, your constituents' advocacy to help, I think, inform all of us about how we can move those things forward more aggressively. And we've done just that, so both of you have had major impacts, major imprints on what we do and how we do it. So our deepest, my deepest thanks, uh, to you all for that work. Thank you.
Supervisor Stork, before we leave, if you're participating in the public safety Santa photo, it is now, immediately. Not five minutes from now, not ten minutes, it is now. Uh, so go directly there and then we'll come back in for lunch before the Transportation Committee at one-thirty.
Meeting is adjourned.